City Council Work Session to order for Tuesday, February 20, 2024. Secretary, please call the room.
Council President Schilling?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Bariantos?
Here.
Counselor Jantsch?
Here.
Counselor Verden?
She just stepped out. She'll be right back.
She'll be right back.
She's right there.
There she is.
We have Counselors Briggs, Collins, Fitzgerald, and Shane excused.
So we have four. And Nancy, if you could move your mic a little closer.
Sure, I can do that. You're nice with these days, too.
No, keep it up.
Okay.
So the first thing on the agenda is the Chamber of Commerce Annual Report. All right, so Mr. Sam. Make sure you bite down on that microphone.
I've heard, yes. Ooh, it gets louder when I do that, doesn't it?
Yeah.
That way everybody can hear us, hopefully.
I'll move that out of the way so that I can chew on it the whole time. Good evening. Thank you, Sam Duffner. I'm the current president of the Chamber of Commerce. Pretty much know most of you. So pleased to be here to give you an overview on what the Chamber of Commerce is doing specifically related to the new venture between the Chamber of Commerce and the Dallas Area Visitor Center, which we're continuing to call the Dallas Area Visitor Center. There was some back and forth in terms of what the name was going to be because they had then explored Dallas for a while. The filing was still under Dallas Area Visitor Center, so we decided to stay with that. I'm gonna try my best to speak into the mic here because I want to point and I want to move around. But yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at the little screen where it's really small, but I have my own notes, too. So anyway, you guys got this in their packet, so you've read through this. So I don't really want to go through point by point everything that's on here. But I do want to spend a little time here on our mission and vision statements because, you know, this is what we're all about, and this is what we're trying to do, and this is what we're trying to accomplish for the business community and the community as a whole. So the Dallas Chamber of Commerce mission is to improve our community one business at a time. We're here to, I can't read that far away. I'm sorry. I'm getting old. Jeez. We're here to make your businesses be integral to our thriving community. Our team and staff and volunteers understands that the community as a whole needs a strong business community. We're here to make sure your business is part of what Dallas makes a great place to live, work, and play. Now, "live, work, and play," some of you may remember that slogan. That was probably six, eight years ago. That was really worked on and really developed. And we stuck with it. The city stuck with it, and it's important. I mean, those three words were picked very strategically and very definitely to be what what we want out of our city, a place to live, work, and play. The Visitor Center mission, Dallas Area Visitor Center, is to stimulate the economy, commerce, growth, and tourism. The Visitor Center is committed to promote the Dallas area through marketing and advertising. A great place to live, work, and play. The Visitor Center provides information to visitors, potential residents, and new businesses alike. So those two missions and visions are very well aligned, and they're, for a long time, they were created together, and then they split up, and now we're trying to bring that back together because those two missions and because those two visions of what we want to accomplish in this community are very intertwined. So our community value, there's a whole list of things that we provide for the community, what we value and what we want to see out of the community, community involvement. For just a few of them that I want to point out, community involvement. Both organizations are very involved in the community from either the business standpoint or the tourism standpoint, which are very intertwined. Access to resources, advocacy for local businesses, marketing. I mean, you can't get really any more intertwined than the marketing aspect because marketing our businesses is marketing both to people in the local area, but more broadly and more to tourism, to anybody outside of our local area because that's how we really grow those businesses. Honestly, from my perspective as a business owner, the marketing within the community, I really see that as my own personal responsibility. You know, if the person down the street, four blocks from my place, doesn't know my business exists, that's my problem. The person in Portland doesn't know my business exists, it's not really something that I have a lot of control over, but that's something a Visitor Center, a marketing campaign can help my business with, providing information to visitors. So this whole presentation, this whole presentation is where we've integrated the Chamber of Commerce and the Visitor Center together. So a lot of these things are things that were peripheral part of the Chamber of Commerce, but now we're trying to make them more central to the Chamber of Commerce as we take on the Visitor Center role. So something like providing information to visitors was really a service that the Chamber of Commerce has been doing for the last five years. We just haven't been doing it as a visitor center. We just haven't been doing it as an official organization. That really was part of our goal, but when people call us up, someone's looking to relocate Dallas from Boston, Massachusetts, they look at Dallas, Oregon. They look at the Chamber of Commerce because that's where they know they can get some information. They may look at a city website, and they would probably look at a Chamber of Commerce. And then they look at the city, and they've got this big bureaucratic phone tree. Or they have the Chamber of Commerce, where they have one phone number, and they'll, I'll call the Chamber of Commerce and say, hey, can you tell me about your community? And so we were putting together packets, and we were mailing those all over the country prior to taking on the roles of the Visitor Center. The second to last one is the one that I find the most important is increasing economic vitality and sustainability. Economic vitality is, it's one of those concepts that's frequently misunderstood in terms of, and a lot of people, when you say economic vitality, they mean, oh, you mean that, you know, businesses are making money. And that's not what economic vitality is. Economic vitality is the whole system working well together, the whole system functioning together so that everybody is functioning good together. You know, that's going to lead to, that's going to lead to vibrant downtown. It's going to lead to people wanting to recreate within the community. It's going to lead to people wanting to visit for events. It's going to lead to all those things. If you've got that economic vitality, that's basically making the community seem like everybody wants to be here. You know, it's not like we just have a few business storefronts where people can go if they happen to want to be there. It's not, it's not that. It's just like that we want this community, it's the community comes together as a whole and functions well as a community, and that's really what economic vitality is, and that's really a large portion of our mission. All right, so what are we trying to do as we bring this Chamber of Commerce and the Visitor Center together? We had a couple, and I'll get to the contract specifically that we signed with the city and the specifics of that and what you were requesting us to do, and which rightfully so. I mean, that's what we signed up to do. But as a, for, in a broader sense, we were really looking at two main things. And one of them was coming up with a physical brick and mortar location, and the other was staffing that location. So, and so a visitor had a place to go to get the information and get the services that they need from the Visitor Center itself, and this is kind of pulling away from the Chamber of Commerce side. However, we wanted to utilize the Chamber as a stable organization to be able to accomplish those missions. And the staffing issue, I'll bring up a little bit later as well, works together. So we spent a good amount of time, and honestly, more so than I really wanted to spend. I mean, I, my vision of how this whole thing was going to work is we were going to sign this contract on July 1st, and by July 31st, we're going to have three out of those four things accomplished, and we're going to have that location open and going by August 30th, and we're going to be hitting the road running, and then reality hit, and things don't work like that. But we did take quite a bit of time in trying to find what I would consider to be the perfect location. And there's, there's not an awful lot, as you all know, there's not an awful lot of vacant commercial real estate in Dallas that we could do something like this. A lot of the vacant commercial real estate had some challenges, either rent that was way too high, specifically for what we're looking for. We're nonprofit, and we joined with the DDA so we would at least have three nonprofits, but even then, a lot of the rents were way too high. They're designed for other things. I mean, particularly if you look at like the rent for office space, typically tends to go into a different category than retail space, and that, and that gets really, really high, and we can't afford it. And then, and the sum of it is quite hidden. And, you know, if you want a Visitor Center, you want a place where someone who's visiting the town can find it. And we don't need a little piece of a strip mall that's two blocks off of any main arterial road that, you know, someone has to really dig out and find to be able to find information. That's not what we were looking for. So what we ended up finding, and we're quite happy with it, is, I don't even know how those of you who've been around here for a long time even refer to it, but the Little Yellow House. I mean, is that, I mean, that's how I've always heard it referred to, is the Little Yellow House, just south on Main Street here, that's owned by Fred and Julie Hurdle. They're, they have been remodeling that for quite a while, and they're getting near completion on that. They've been getting near completion for quite a while. If you've been driving through town for a long time, you saw they actually lifted the whole house off the foundation, reported, put in new plumbing. I mean, this is, honestly, I don't know why they did it. I don't know what possibly possessed them to put this much energy and effort into this house. But it's a really cool old house. It was built in the 1890s. The construction, I could go, the construction on this, like tongue and groove, two-by-sixes for the exterior walls, no insulate. I mean, it's, it's old school stuff, and it's been a lot of things, most recently hot rod hair with the old cool spiral staircase in the middle. I'm not sure exactly even where that came from. But as they're nearing completion on that, we thought, several of us thought, you know, that would be a really good location, and there were some other really good locations, too. But this is one that's actually coming up for rent, and it's something that perhaps we could talk with them and come up with a feasible plan to go forward. And in talking with them, they liked our idea. I mean, it wasn't just about, we need dollars and cents. It was like, here's what we want to do. We want to create basically a nonprofit center. We want to have a place where all of the nonprofits can have the information for the community in one place. And it just so happens to be right next to the coffee bar that their daughter owns. And so that's a little bit of business incentive for them as well. It's freestanding with lots of space around it, so there is some parking, but it's very visible. So someone driving by can see it. To my mind, in the long term, it's even a better position because of the idea of that the move of the entrance, south entrance into Dallas, being on Main Street down there, coming through the Old Millsite, as that starts to develop, that puts it right on that entrance, the south entrance into town, even though it is a little bit far to the south if you're coming to the north entrances. It's close to the main highway. I mean, it's not exactly, but if you're on the main highway, the state highway going through town, you can see it, and especially we're intending to put a monument sign out there. So anyway, we started negotiations. We actually talked them into it because they had multiple tenants that wanted to go in there. We talked them into it and said, hey, we're going to be a great fit for this back in August, and then nothing happened, and nothing happened, and nothing happened. And as, as we kept checking in, I'm like, hey, what's going on? I knew that Fred's trying to do a lot of the tenant improvements himself and trying to get it ready to go. But realistically, all we really needed was electrical and plumbing, and we've got a volunteer base that's ready to go in and make it work. You know, we've got people that'll paint. We've got people that'll do walls. We've got people that'll do flooring. We got world furniture with office supplies and all that kind of stuff. I just found out about a week or two ago, the whole holdup was actually Pacific Power. So if you've ever worked with Pacific Power, in this picture, you can actually see at the top, you can see the main service entrance lines. They lay on the roof of the building. Obviously not kosher, so they need to move the main service entrance. So they applied for that back in the first of October. Pacific Power just finally started reviewing their application last week. So that's kind of, that's what we've been waiting for, and unfortunately, that's held us up. That's that reality of like, I can't, you know, I would have been in four months ago and been building the walls myself, or finishing the walls myself, but no, that's where we're at. So anyway, we're in the process right now of securing a, no, I don't know what the actual proper term is it, but at least on that building, while we don't occupy it, to be able to apply for grant funding to get some help in getting all that stuff done as a Visitor Center. But that, for all intents and purposes, that's our new, that's our new location, and I think it's a great location. Throughout the next year or two, we will be doing quite a lot of improvements on there. We're looking at grants that would try to retain the historical nature of the building, too. So some of that may be tailored to that with the windows and the siding. I had an interesting conversation with Fred the other day about the siding. There's a company that makes siding that looks just like that to try to retain the historical nature of it, but it would be four times the cost of other siding. And to his mind, he's like, ah, I'm not going to do it. It's not worth it. And I was like, wait a minute here. What if we look at getting a grant that would help us pay for that? That's the whole point of those. We can retain that historic nature and cover the increase of that cost. So anyway, that's the first step of our big step forward in opening this Visitor Center, having that location. We've already got commitments from the Downtown Association, obviously the Chamber of Commerce, because we're one and the same. We're also looking at trying to do something to house or work with the Arts Association to have them have some either space in there or at least exhibits in there so that they can be involved in that project as well. The next main thing was to come up with staff, to particularly to be someone to be the face of the Visitor Center when someone come in, comes in. There's two things about that number. We want to have this open six days a week, and so the goal is to find a combination of a part-time staff person who's going to be just solely to be the face of the Visitor Center. Tyler Ferrari, who's city staff, who we get 10 hours a week for, we have a contract with the city. I don't know how to phrase that right, but yes, 10 hours is for the Visitor Center themselves. And so Tyler can be in there part of the time, although we feel that Tyler's strength is not necessarily in sitting at a desk greeting visitors. The primary thing that we've been trying to utilize him for is for grant writing to try to do that kind of stuff. And then we've got our program manager, Tara Townley, the Chamber of Commerce. 10 hours of her time is now specifically dedicated to the Visitor Center as well, and seeing as how a lot of what she does in the chamber is also desk oriented. I mean, that's not the greatest term, but yeah, she's, she's there in the office so that she'll basically cover some of those office hour time, too, to make sure there's somebody there. Then also be working with the DDA to cover some of that time as well, and then possible volunteers as well. At this point, though, so we went through a process. We actually went through multiple hiring, recruiting, and we came up with what we feel is a great person to be our, we've listed it as a customer service associate, but our Visitor Center staff, and her name is Skyann Pearson, and she's actually here tonight. I want to introduce you all to her. So this is Sky. She goes by Sky, not Skyann. You want to, you can sit here and speak into the mic.
Hello, my name is Skyann, and I'm really excited to be here and working with the Visitor Center. I am a college student at Western Oregon University, and I'm studying education. So I'm going to be an English teacher, and yeah, I'm super excited to get started with the Visitor Center, and it's been really fun just building the welcome center, welcome packets, and also just like getting involved in the community. I'm really enjoying it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, so that's the first step in our staffing, and a very crucial big step in the staffing moving forward. Let's see, sorry. Oops, I skipped a page. I'm like, that doesn't match what my notes say. So some of the missions of the state, or some of the things that the Chamber of Commerce does that kind of mesh with Visitor Center pretty well are a bunch of these things that we listed off in the next couple of slides. I'm just going to skim over this because I don't want to keep your online. As I said, you read this, and so, but under education, the Chamber is really heavy under trying to build the workforce. That's one of our strategic goals. Honestly, it's the strategic goal as a Chamber that we feel, at least I feel as the president, that we're probably not doing as well as we need to be doing. And so every time we do strategic goals, that's something I'm always pushing for is, hey, we need to be working more on this, and we used to have a little bit more. But honestly, in the last few years, we've just been trying to survive, and that tends to be the one that goes out, goes to the wayside as your long-term stuff, which is education is very much a long-term thing. But we're trying to utilize the Visitor Center merge to try to help us with some of that. Because one of the goals in the contract with the Chamber, with the city was to try to come up with training for our businesses downtown, in particular our customer service businesses, to make Dallas a welcoming place to visitors. And so some of that is just training people on how to greet new people, on how to have good, strong customer service and focus on customers and whatnot. So anyway, there's a list of things that we're working on there. Collaboration is something that we're actually probably the strongest at in the Chamber of Commerce. We have an awful lot of collaborative programs that we work on, working with, there's a whole list of people there, and it came up. We have an awful lot of collaborative programs that we work on, working with, there's a whole list of people there and it came up with our contract with the city. Again, I'll get to them a little bit. We start looking at the requirement to come up with collaborative arrangements with all of these different organizations. We're like, we already kind of do that. That's really because our program manager is very, very much about collaboration. She's very much about trying to accomplish things as a team, trying to accomplish things together rather than separate. Events is an interesting one because honestly, is it, I've been on the board in the chamber for I think five years now, four or five years now. It's either my fifth or, yeah, it's my fifth. And depending on who's on that board, there's always a difference of opinion in terms of whether we should be an event organization. There's no difference of opinion on whether a visitor center should be an event organization. I mean, the visitor center should be doing things to promote tourism and a lot of the time that's events. The Chamber of Commerce on the other side, on the other hand, that's generally can go either way. I mean, some events promote business, some events don't. And there's an awful lot of time and energy that's spent in events. So anyway, the merge with the visitor center in the chamber allows us to focus a little bit on some more of the larger events such as crazy days, whatever happens with crazy days. The other town events that that are happening that I'll talk about in specific, the farmer's market coming back, the Christmas town thing that we've been trying to work on recently. A lot of that list though, a lot of that list is stuff that is more collaborative type stuff, like the small business showcase, Wake Up Wednesday, the Polk County Young Professionals. Those are all things that the chamber are really, really deeply embedded in our chamber and they really focus on keeping, keeping our businesses tied together and keeping them active and being active participants in the community. The farmer's market though, as farmer's market is kind of the first thing we really took on as a visitor center. And the farmer's market is, y'all, I'm sure y'all, you all have been here long enough to remember the farmer's market and maybe even multiple iterations of the farmer's market. It's been something that's pretty hard. I remember when I first started on the board of the visitor center before I was on the board of the Chambers of Commerce. Bonnie Dryer was the one that did that and she did five different main events throughout the year. And the farmer's market took almost all of her time. She could spend as much time on the farmer's market as she could spend on, it was Summer Fest at the time, it wasn't Crazy Days, but Summer Fest, Freedom Fest, the, the concert series and what was the other one? It was a fifth one and now it might, it might have been, oh, it was Winter Fest. It was called Winter Fest at the time. Yeah, that's right. So she could spend as much time on that, on the farmer's market, but it didn't have near the impact that any of those others did. So it was always kind of just left on the wayside. Like she wanted it to be great and it took so much time and she couldn't do it. She finally just gave up, couldn't do it. And multiple people have tried to restart that. So what we did this year is we got a rare participant and the visitor center pays for part of that. The DDA pays for part of that. I think the city pays for part of that as well. Certainly once removed, they're paying for a lot of that. I mean, the TLT dollars would be paying for a lot of that. So anyway, the idea is to make the farmer's market strong. And, and because that has wide ranging benefits from the business community, from small entrepreneurship, from the downtown businesses or just from having more foot traffic, from the community itself, from people being able to go and buy their produce and whatnot, or whatever else the farmers or vendors happen to be selling there. I mean, I can remember I used to buy a huge amount of my produce from Gardner's Food Stand. You probably all remember Gardner's Food Stand. I really sad that that's gone away. So that went away and the visitor center, I mean, excuse me, and the farmer's market went away. I was like, where do I go get my fresh local produce now? I, I just don't. And so anyway, that I, we think this is going to be a strong benefit that we can work together to make happen. All right. So getting into a little of the nitty gritty here, the budget, which there's absolutely no way I can read that on that screen. But it's big enough up there. There we go. It's big enough up there that you can see it. This is, we're doing a quarterly budget. I mean, typically we do an annual budget. Most nonprofits do an annual budget and the city does an annual budget. We're really haven't, we've been really struggling with that. We've kind of put together rudimentary annual budget, but we've found that for now, we really kind of have to do it quarterly. And so this is a quarterly. This is not an annual. And the reason for that is expenses that we have no idea are going to show up, show up and because we have nothing to go on. We don't have a prior year to look at and we don't, so it's just totally a guess. And things that we expect to spend, we don't end up spending money on. Like we still haven't spent money on rent yet. We have our staff person, but we've got this extra money. So the bottom line, the total expenses is at 21,300 for this quarter. Our contract with, with y'all is for $15,000 per quarter. So that's obviously not going to cover that, but we're, and it's actually higher because we just authorized in a board meeting this morning to pay for the new logo for the visitor center and chamber as well. It was contracted, I don't know, I'm going to say that wrong. I'm going to misspeak if I say it. Somehow or another it happened and the city asked us to pay for that. I don't know whether the city commissioned that or what, but somehow another city asked us to pay for that because we hadn't been paying rent. And it was like, of course, absolutely. That's for us. We'll pay for that. So there's another, I think it was $1,200 that add on to that. So it would be 22,500 for this quarter, which we don't have any problem with because we haven't been spending quite as much as we expected in previous quarters. And so we do have a little bit of money left over. And then some of this actually, even though it's budgeted for this quarter, may not happen. So the right-hand side there, that's a list of supplies that we need, that we're expecting to need to actually open the doors and some of that may go up, some of it may not. I, I know that there's quite a few things that, not quite a few things, there are a few things that aren't on that list that will have to happen and some of them small, like curtains. I didn't see curtains on that list. Some of them large, like a conference room table, which yeah, that's, there's a side story to that, but one way or the other, there, this is our best guess. But that $2,900, so $3,000 to open will happen whenever we actually get that certificate of occupancy and we can go in the doors, which hopefully is within the next month or two. The rest of it's kind of basically our primary, as you would expect, is payroll. And then there's some fixed in, fixed expenses like our insurance and and then there's stuff on utilities and whatnot. And then there's some stuff like our actual advertising budget, which varies quite a bit depending on what we're doing. So that's where we are for this quarter. So we've got one other item going, or thing we're working with the city on. This is, has really, is not our scope of work. Our scope of, this is what the city is putting together for a outside firm to do digital marketing, which we're working with the city on. So this is kind of what we've come up with, working with the city to, I love this little screen. So this is the, what we're looking at in terms of happening marketing digitally, which is basically filling in where we're not going to be. So we're going to be the physical location. We're going to be the face. We're going to be the person that you come and ask questions to. But the website in the background is not something that we have the expertise to handle. And so the city is looking to hire someone who is an expert in that field. And so this is kind of the scope of work that we've been working with the city to try to make that happen. So our goals, and these goals are, this is the, the really dumbed down basic version, obviously, because if you were to look at our actual goals, we've, we've got the measurements in them. We've got the matrix, the timelines in them and all that kind of stuff. But what we really want to do, and some of these are visitor center specific and some of these are chamber specific, but maintain and increase financial structure. That's something that goes on both sides. On the chamber side, we're a member-based organization. So our financial structure is to, how do we have enough members? How do we provide the, the value to those members so that they'll want to sign up? And so that they'll want to sign up at higher levels and get more benefits out of their membership and utilize their membership to the best possibility. On the visitor center side, it's going to be more, how do we provide for, for businesses, for entities such that they're going to want to sponsor things. So they're going to want to get more out of a visitor center in terms of giving us some money in terms of sponsorship. It's also going to be in terms of how do we get grants to cover things that we need help covering. Increase engagement. That's mostly a chamber goal, but it, because I'm pretty sure further down there, it's going to have, maybe it didn't. So increasing engagement might, and the tourism side is obviously the marketing side, increasing engagement in Dallas, but increasing engagement in the, from the chamber side is just getting businesses involved with what's going on. Defining chamber and visitor center's role in the community events. This is one that's obvious. I mean, because we have people at all of the meetings that happen to, to either plan or promote the events. And so how, what's our role in that? And that's always an interesting one because you don't want to say yes to everything because then you stretch yourself then they can't make it, make anything happen. But you don't want to say no to things that we should be doing. A great example of that is, is the crazy day stuff going on right now, which you're all aware of and where that's going to go. And so we have, definitely have a role in that organ, in that planning committee and how that's going to go forward and what we can do to make that go forward. Attend to staffing needs. That's all obviously all internal in terms of the visitor center. Our goal is to have that location open for six days a week. So people can show up any day, Monday through Saturday and visit. I think Monday to Saturday is what we've planned, what we were planning on. Strategic planning so that we know what, where we're going in the future. Developing strong ambassador. Ambassador is a specific committee within the chamber. So that's the, a committee that goes out and tries to promote the chamber to potential members and to the community. And then networking committees are all those things where we're trying to bring everybody together. Build workforce development programs. That was that education piece that I mentioned before. That's one of our specific goals within the chamber. And then building strategic alliances because you can't do anything by yourself. Create your team. That's what Tara always says. All right. So in terms of the contract, here's what we said we would do with that money, that 15,000 per quarter. And all the check marks are things that we feel that we've accomplished as of yet, and then a lot of things that we still have to work on. So we are listed with, as the official DMO with Travel Salem, we're getting information through them and passing that on to the, to the parties that are necessary, creating that training program. AHLA is American Hospitality and Leisure Association. Lodging Association, not leisure, lodging association. They have a guest services course that we can use to try to train, do customer service. There's also a few other sources for that. Logistics, we're looking for finding a shared space, which we found that space, but we're now looking at how do we make that usable so that we're open six days a week. Staffing, we've got our part-time person, but we still need to figure out what that staffing is going to look like with everybody, not just one part-time person. And so we're working on that. Marketing, okay, we've, we have put together our scope of work, which was with the contract. And then we're working with the city to, to work on the other side, the, the digital side. We've got a lot of the data collection stuff still to go and that will be happening obviously as we near the end of our year in terms of conducting surveys was something that was determined to be useful with the prior visitor center. And so we'll continue to try to do that because survey is really not really useful unless you have baseline data to go on. So once you've got that baseline data, if they've already done it, we might as well continue to do it so that we can have good, accurate information. Tracking data in terms of, these are the things that were listed actually in the contract, which was new businesses, community investment, economic impact of visitors. And so those are specific data points that we can point to to say, hey, we're actually accomplishing something and more than just the touchy feely of, hey, we're here and everybody loves us. We want to know, are we actually accomplishing something for this money? Establishing relationships. There's a whole list of establishing relationships and most of these are things that we have been doing for years. I mean, that's really why you guys contracted with us, because we have those relationships and because we continue to build those relationships and because we prioritize and focus on those relationships. And so that's really the best thing that we can bring to the table is that we, we, we're in the community, we're in, most of these are businesses. I mean, some of them and nonprofits, businesses and nonprofits, which we have as members both. There's some that, that we can always work to increase that relationship to a lot of resources. I mean, that's really what I'm thinking. I don't think, I can't think of anybody we've really got mad at us or anything like that, but there's a lot of resources that I'm sure we can still tap. And that's really what I'm looking at. And so those, we can always be working on that in the future. And so a thank you and a reminder that we really do need your support to make this happen. This is, I mean, this $60,000 throughout a year may not seem like a huge amount of money. But to us, it really is the difference between making this happen and not making it happen. We're able to utilize having a 501(c)(3), which is a visitor center, the 501(c)(3). And so for those of you don't know that, the different, the Chamber of Commerce is a 501(c)(6) that allows us to do political advocacy work. But that precludes us from getting a lot of grant funding. So we can't go to Ford Foundation and say, hey, we want to do an educational thing because we have the ability to do political advocacy. They're like, yeah, we don't want to touch that. So having a 501(c)(3) allows us to use those funds, use our existence to leverage an awful lot of funds and leverage an awful lot of relationships and into a lot greater things. It's coming through the TLT dollars. Y'all probably know that. And then wanted to make sure and point out that Tyler at 10 hours a week is, is, it may not seem like, again, may not seem like an awful lot, but it's an awful lot to us and he's very integral and very crucial to what we do. So that's what I got.
Any questions for Sam?
I have something. I'll even answer beer questions.
I got, I do have a question.
Okay.
Back in the day when the two associations shared an office.
Yes.
They did not have an agreement between the two on who's going to ensure what.
On who is what?
Who's going to ensure what part of the visitor center or the chamber? So you're going to be sharing an office with the DDA. Are you going to have an interim government agreement or some sort of contract? Who's going to be responsible for insurance on the building? Who's responsible for maintenance on the outside? Things like that, because if people are going to trip and fall, they don't know who to sue.
I'm sorry, I'm laughing because yes, the insurance agent news coming out. Yes. So the, the way we structured this, so we actually retained Lane Shutterly to help us figure out how to do this legally, properly. So right now, the location is going to be leased by the visitor center and that is specifically for grants. And to be able to do the tenant improvements required to get us in there. Once that's done, the intent for us is to lease the building and the space entirely by the Chamber of Commerce. And then sublease to the other entities, specific areas. And so I honestly couldn't answer exactly the, the.
You kind of answered it for me.
What's that?
You've kind of answered it for me.
Okay. So, and we are, I mean, obviously we have an insurance agent that's, that's working on all of this with us, several actually. But the way the structure is, is the Chamber of Commerce and the visitor center are separate entities. And the Chamber of Commerce has the authority to appoint the board for the visitor center. So it's essentially under that, but it's own, it's, it's own organization. Right now we have separate insurance policies. We're actually looking at joining them so that we don't have to pay twice because there's that, in that budget, there was that $330. But the visitor, the chamber already pays their own multiple policies, one for the directors and then one for general liability. So moving forward, the idea is to have, because the visitor center is a sub-organization of the chamber, to have the chamber have control over the building and then sublease to both the DDA and the visitor center.
Cause one of the questions they had is who ensures that desk? Who ensures that chair when it's sitting in the lobby of the building? Who's responsible for ensuring that in case it gets broken or something?
Yeah.
So you need to answer all those questions before you get started, but sounds good.
Okay. Yes.
In the goals section, you had a lot of lofty goals and it's, I mean, I don't know. Did you ever think about maybe a three to five-year plan as opposed to one year to accomplish all those goals?
So referring to the, the, the one that I called goals or the other that's the contract. So those are, those are three to five-year goals. We have, we actually, this, that's just a summary of a document that we have that has.
I read it looked like 2023 to 2024, one year.
Well, there's a, there's a, there's a mix there because the chambers goals are, are long-term. The visitor center, we haven't really even created goals other than just saying this is what our vision is. But the contract that we have, the city said, has very specifics that, but those are only a one year because our, our contract is only one year and hopefully it gets renewed. And that's part of why I'm here is because I want to make sure that it gets renewed. So we don't do all this and then just toss it by the wayside where we, my understanding is that the contracts with the city are one year continuously, that they're not able to make a long-term contract. That doesn't necessarily mean we won't make long-term goals and hope that we're still in existence and I mean, have, have some kind of surety and consistency. But, but we haven't sat down as a visitor center board and done that. It took a little bit longer than what I expected also to create the board. Because the people that are on the board, I don't have that list here. If you really needed it though, I could pull it up. But the people that are on the visitor center board are not the same people that are on the chamber board. There's, I want to say three of us that are on both boards, but most of the people that we recruited for the visitor center board were people that were more. were people that were more in tourism-type industries. So for example, Bethany Ford from Illahi Vineyards because she represents wineries, and Rachel Greco from Grandma's Attic, she's actually the president of that board because she kind of serves as her own little visitor center, hosting people from all over the place into that business. Nate Woods from Focal Point, another one that they, he kind of serves his own little visitor center too. He draws people from all over the place. So we recruited people specifically different from those two boards. So that group of people has only been meeting since December. The outgoing president was John Woods, and he'd been the president, kind of just left with it for about five years. And so he was really ready to be done with that. And so he got us going and got us a new executive committee on that board and walked away. So that, that one, three, five-year goals, the chambers are one, three, five. I'm hoping that will, what's that?
Couldn't talk him into it, could you?
Well, honestly, I probably could have, but I felt guilty.
Yeah.
And one, one follow-up. How long was this in the making? Because I couldn't, I wouldn't believe that maybe in the, just in the past year, you just came up and said, hey, this is going to be a good idea if we did a visitors joint venture with the visitor. Were you foreseeing this maybe three years ago, four years ago?
So, so a little bit of history that maybe, I mean, some of you know and some of you don't know. So the visitor center was created, I want to say mid-'90s, specifically when the TLT tax was instituted in Dallas. It was basically a pass-through for those TLT dollars, a way to use those for tourism because there's a 70/30 split and 70% has to be used on tourism-related funding. 30% can be used wherever. And that was part of the Chamber of Commerce. And it was, it was that way for many years. The staffing and the funding got too intertwined, and there was, there was really no differentiation. And there was a city council at the time, this would have been six years ago. There was, there was turnover within the chamber in terms of directors. And the city council deemed that the, particularly the financing wasn't clear enough that the, and they were concerned that the financing, the finances, the TLT dollars were going towards chamber functions instead of going towards visitor functions. And so at that point in time, they basically, well, there was multiple things going on. From the chamber visitor center side, they were just trying, we were trying to figure out how to, how to survive, how to function as two different entities as opposed to being together. The city side was, we were not confident that these funds are being used properly. So those, that contract was canceled, those funds were pulled back. When that happened, pretty much both organizations kind of fell apart, the visitor center and the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce being a member organization, we could kind of stay together, and we've been basically in rebuild mode ever since then. At the time, we had a director, it was director of both organizations. He was an MBA, he was, he was paid well. And so we couldn't afford that, so we went to a part-time manager. The visitor center went into just like limp mode, they tried to go all online. The city tried to take over some of the DMO-type stuff, and that didn't work either with the city hall trying to be the physical location. And so that's been that way for three, four years. And it was actually the city that came to us this year, probably March, might have been February. Basically said, hey, we're thinking about, we would like to have a physical location, would you guys take this on? And so that happened, was not something we were expecting, and so it literally did happen really quickly. It was, it was our executive team got together and said, hey, can we do this? We've been, you know, we've, we're doing a lot of this stuff already, can we make it work? And so it was February to June where we put this all together. And that's probably part of why it didn't happen by the end of July, like I would have liked it to happen. Because it was very quick and rushed.
Any other questions for Sam?
Just one compliment. Two slides back.
What's that?
Two slides back.
Two slides back.
I love your subliminal message in the picture because the yellow house is visible in that picture from that view.
Oh, just barely.
Just barely, but very good job.
Oh, that's right.
For the report.
Brian was telling me I can use the mouse here, right? There we go. So it would be like right there.
Yep, you can see it. And then the second you said, any questions? What do you do in the wood, in your wood shop? What kind of business is it?
I have a sawmill and I reclaim wood from, from, mostly it's waste wood from City of Salem and Marion County. And right now I'm processing cedar to make planer boxes for the spring.
One last thing is, kudos to you about economic vitality. I think that's a word that you use, that's spot on. I think what you're talking about is resources and people making choices. But good words been there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else for Sam?
Thank you for the report, Sam.
You're welcome, anytime.
Any other business for the workshop? Yeah, then we're adjourned.